Call to order the October 14, 2024 Culpeper County School Board Regular Board Meeting. Roll call, all members are present. If we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we will have an adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
A move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think Mrs. Pearson got that. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye or aye. Any opposed? None. All right, seven oh. All right, presentations. We have a couple of presentations. Mrs. Desalee will help us with that. Would Maria Bell come up, please? The student recognition first is for the American Legion Auxiliary. If you take that microphone out, you can kind of talk towards the peep.
Can I just not use it?
You can, you can.
No, you need to be on for the television.
Yeah. But you can still take it out.
That's okay.
All right. Tell us who you have.
Okay, my name is Marla Bell, and I am the art teacher at Culpeper County High School. I have Eliza Bowler. Eliza? She is a 12th grader at CCHS. She entered the American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Contest in March, and we just found out in September that she won it for the whole state of Virginia. So I have, this is a big blown-up picture of it. She will get honored next Wednesday night with the American Legion.
And we have something, too.
Can you hold the poster up so we can see it?
Oh, wow. That is very nice. So you need to.
Come on over and have a picture with her.
Oh, we're not with this one. This is a bad picture.
Thank you very much. The next award is the Student Recognition American Legion Auxiliary. And would Mrs. Theresa Chernay come up, please?
Good evening. My name is Theresa Chernay. I'm a third grade teacher at Emerald Hill, and this is Miranda Sutton. She's in my third grade class this year. I'm honored to be here tonight and to be with her to help her assist with this presenting of the Poppy Poster Contest Award. Every year, children in local schools are given this opportunity to design a poster, and Miranda did just that last year. The poster must center around the poppy flower, a symbol of remembrance for fallen soldiers, and it's open to grades second through 12th grade. And so next Wednesday, she will also be presented with the award at the American Legion. It has been a pleasure getting to know and work with Miranda. Miranda is a student who not only is very creative, but she also leaves with such high example in my classroom, and her kind-hearted nature and willingness is a true testament to her values, and I really look forward to seeing the things that she will accomplish in her future. So thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. At this time, we have the VSBA Academy Awards. Mrs. Hoover?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Bradts, members of the board. I am here tonight to roll out the red carpet for you to present the Virginia School Board Association Academy Awards. The Virginia Standards of Quality include a requirement for local school board member training. Credits earned through the VSBA School Board Academy fulfill this requirement. Awards are based on participation from July 1st to June 30th, and the VSBA Academy Awards are presented annually to school board members who meet the requirements. The VSBA recognizes board members for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardmanship skills through VSBA meetings, conferences, board development, and training, and active involvement in the association. There are five levels of the awards with certificates and pins awarded for particular levels. I will read off our awards, and then after that, I will bring you your certificates. We have an Award of Recognition for 15 credits for Ms. Smith. An Award of Achievement for 24 credits, which is a certificate, and a bronze pin to Ms. Pearson. We have an Award of Excellence for 48 credits over two years, which is a certificate and a silver pin to Dr. Bradts. And then the Award of Distinction, which is 84 credits over two years, which comes with a certificate and a starfish pin, and that award goes to Ms. Baker, Ms. Burnett, Ms. Brown, and Mrs. Hutchins. So congratulations.
At this time, we would have a presentation by Mr. Toler, but he's ill tonight, so his presentation on alternative education will be moved to the next meeting in November. All right, so at this time, we have the delegations wishing to speak. I need to read a disclaimer of sorts. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding the Culpeper County Public Schools. There will be no action taken by the board at this meeting, and such items will be referred to the appropriate administrators for future information and research. Personalities and behaviors of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. Each speaker shall limit his or her remarks to three minutes. No speaker shall be permitted to allocate any portion of his or her speaking time to another person. No speaker may address the board more than once during a meeting. Delegations wishing to address the board are requested to sign in prior to the meeting with their name, address, and topic, and a sheet for that purpose was over there until the meeting began. So at this time, I would ask Kristin Calucci if she would come forward to give us comments.
Esteemed school board members, my name is Kristin Calucci. This is my 28th year of teaching high school English, and this is my third year at CCHS. I'm also the president of the CCEA, our educational labor union. Tonight, I am here as a representative of educators who have been on the front lines dealing with the obfuscations caused by rampant cellphone use in the classroom and no real effective way to deal with the situation. Well, we've tried, we've tried, all of us have tried. Administrators, teachers, counselors, parents, office managers, substitutes, paras, people walking through the building, we've all tried. However, a wise person has told me recently that to try is to fail. Let me say that I have not spoken to every secondary teacher to get his or her input on the matter. However, sharing three years of post-COVID repercussions and bonding over never-before-experienced events that have happened in the classroom, cellphones being the absolute, sorry, absolute cause of these anomalistic events, I feel that I can confidently say, thank you. Thank you for helping us regain the integrity of our classrooms. I spoke to six teachers last week and asked them how they feel about the yonder pouches. I'll try to delineate their visceral responses. I would say, so what do you think about these yonder pouches coming? What do you think? And each educator would do this, and I decided that I'd have to show you. They would get like this twinkle in their eyes, and they would take a deep breath, and they would go, ah, I can't wait. And then they would kind of walk away in like this daze. They would, so, but what can't they wait for, right? I can't wait, I can't wait. That's what they were all saying. That was the unanimous decision, is I can't wait. What can't they wait for? Students engaged in the lessons again, students engaged in their own learning again, students talking to each other, students talking to us. We're excited to get our students back. However, this is not going to be easy. We are essentially detoxing over 1,000 students at one time that first morning, first block, when the students, for the very first time, probably in their high school careers, have been asked to put their cellphone away for an entire day. This is daunting. We are all going to need patience and support and guidance as we navigate this untraversed landscape, and we need to do all of this with love and respect. By you all voting on instituting the use of these pouches, you are sending us the message that we are on the same team. And for that, on behalf of the educators who are on the front lines, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other people that wish to speak? Yes, ma'am?
I do not have that.
It's okay, come on up. I do need your name, and you can just give me your voting district would be fine.
Cedar Mountain.
Okay.
My name's Emily Rojas.
Say that again in the.
Oh, sorry. My name's Emily Rojas, Cedar Mountain District. Using my phone, too. I think we all did. I guess my first question is answered already, and that the pouches haven't already been purchased, that this, that we are still deliberating over this. But my, I guess my biggest point was that the bags are a HIPAA violation in that my daughter, she's a type 1 diabetic, she uses her phone as a medical device. She's not the only student in CCPS that uses a phone as a medical device. Not every child chooses to keep their circumstances private. My daughter doesn't. She'll tell anyone that asks, she's like, yeah, I'm a type 1 diabetic. I can tell you everything about it. It's really cool, I'm cool, it's fine. But there are a lot of children that are like, no, I don't want to talk about it. It's my, my situation, it's very private. And this subgroup of students, they are, this will isolate them, it will polarize them. If you have your medical, your phone, which is now a medical device out, this is telling everyone around you, I have a medical condition, I have something that is private that is now public. This will cause resentment with their peers, because then there's a question, which my daughter already gets every day, why does Maddie have her phone? Why does this person have their phone? Why do they get to have their phone? Why does this student have their phone out? They shouldn't have to explain that. And the teachers are welcome, and they do. They always, with my daughter, say, that's none of your business, back to work. But it's still a redundant question that will be asked even more so now, once the pouches are instituted. Our children, they deserve the right to make that choice. It's their body, they have autonomy over their body, and they shouldn't be asked to say, I am going to tell everyone what's going on with my body. And putting their phone out when everyone isn't, is doing that. The, the guidance for the cellphone-free education pursuant with Executive Order 33, it says on page 5 and 6 that considerations must be made for HIPAA and any implications that would have, that it would have impacted students. Therefore, this is a direct violation of HIPAA rights. My next point is that children involved in extracurricular, I know lots of us have athletes and kids involved in academics after school, theater kids, my kids are involved in everything. And during the day, my son, who is, you know, academically doing great, he doesn't text in class, he doesn't do anything, but if there's a change, he sends me a quick text in the hallway, Mom, pick me up at this time, pick me up at that time, I need to stay after for sports med, I need to stay after for this. If he has to send an electronic pass to go to the office, that's, how much instructional time is that taken out to send the pass to go to the office? How many kids are in the office waiting? Because they also had their schedule changed because some sort of athletic thing just changed. So they're waiting to use the phone to call their parent, who may or may not answer because they may or may not be at work. And a quick text is as simple as, I'll look at it when I get it. But now they've got to call, they've got to get an answer, they've got to say, okay, Mom, pick me up at 5:00. All right, bye. That's, you know, the time to go to the office, the time to go back to class. That's 10, 15 minutes of instructional time taken away just to say, pick me up at 5:00.
You're almost out of time.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying to talk really fast.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's it.
Just finish it up for us, please.
I know a lot of parents are going to talk about safety, and I know that they aren't supposed to have their phones during that, and so I, the beeping is throwing me off, I'm sorry. I, I don't think that that is a factor because they're not supposed to have them, but a lot of parents are going to say it is. But that shouldn't be what we're all talking about. But as adults, you know, as college students, my oldest two are in college now, they have to police themselves. They have to say, I can't take my phone to class, I won't get the material I need. We have to teach them now. We have to teach them today in order to know if they have to put it in their backpack. And the guidance from the governor says that is an option, to turn their phone off, to put it in their backpack. We don't need the pouches that are going to cost the district money to maintain when they can just put it in their backpack. There needs to be, okay, thank you for giving me extra time.
Thank you. Thank you for understanding. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Good evening, board. Danny Soderholm, Cedar Mountain District. It's year 23 in education for me, but year eight in Culpeper, and I have two graduates from Culpeper County Public Schools. I have two students currently in Culpeper, one at CMS in 7th grade and a 10th grader at CCHS. And two boys, two girls, run the gambit. My students are involved, my children were involved in fine arts, or are involved, fine arts, athletics, all of those things, and they love it. And they love school, and they love their friend, being with their friends. That's the best part about it for them. Their favorite classes are the ones their friends are in. I can tell you interacting with their friends is the best part. As I've met with my students, we've discussed the proposal of the yonder pouches. They're concerned, and it's like I'm having the same conversation I've had with each of my children, when I tell them that they're going to plug up their phone somewhere other than their bedroom at night. And I said, and they say, but Dad, I'm not using it at night. I go, I understand. So why do you need it in your bedroom? Well, I need an alarm clock. And they give me all these reasons. I go, you've got an alarm clock. Well, I need it for my music. You've got an Alexa in there. You can do all those things, and you don't need that phone. It's a constant nagging of saying, did I get an alert? Did I get a notification? And it's a distraction, it's something we're always thinking about. But when that phone goes, plugs in in the kitchen or in Mom and Dad's room, they're not having those distractions anymore. All of those concerns, all of those arguments go away when we have reasonable conversations. This is a thoughtful proposal that's going to be good for our students. It's going to be good for their mental health, it's going to be good for our teachers. We're going to have less disruptions in the classroom, more engagement. I tell my students all the time that good choices lead to more good choices and options, and bad choices lead to fewer choices. I think this is a good choice, and I encourage you to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? All right, at this time, we will close the delegation's comments and move to the consent agenda. Is, the consent agenda has approval of the minutes from September 9th and 23, has payroll and bill payment, and the approval of tuition rates for '24, '25. Is there a motion to accept these?
Send them.
So moved was Mrs. Baker. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Pearson. Is there any discussion on any of these? Hearing none. We will vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 7 to 0. All right, action items. Response to the Executive Order 33, approval of the revised use of the cellphones and personal electronic devices. We went one read pursuant to school board action on September 23rd. Is there a motion to accept?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the revised use of cellphones and personal electronic devices policy.
Second? Second, I heard Betsy, Mrs. Smith. Any discussion, any comments anyone wants to make? Mrs. Hutchins?
I would just like to say, I've heard concerns from parents over the time, changes in time during the day for pickup, for changes in scheduling for after-school, and I understand that this is going to put an additional burden on the main office in every, in all of our secondary schools. So I just want to make sure that teachers are more cognizant of the fact, or coaches are more cognizant of the fact, that in order for students to get contact with their parents, that they need to be aware that they don't have their phones to do this so easily. Also, that the, that the main office staff is going to see an influx of students coming when they do need to make those changes. I am in total support of the, of the policy. I just want to know, want people to know that we have heard your concerns, that we are aware of them. It's going to take adjustment for the students as well as our staff to adjust to this policy. But it is, I think it's very necessary for our students and for our teachers to be able to do their job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Bradts, and Dr. Halk, and Ms. Hoover, and the school administrators, and, and the students and the parents that have given input regarding Executive Order 33. It's, it's came out in July, and here we are already in October, so the wheels of government sometimes maybe don't move quickly, but in this case, they are moving expeditiously. And so that, that has been good. I, I know there have been some very clear recommendations made in terms of, you know, family-based emergency school planning, and I know Mrs. Hoover's done a very good job of, of working with everyone and communicating how those things will be handled. Also, for non-emergency family protocols, some of which, you know, you were talking about here. Also, I know there are procedures in place for students with Section 504 plans, or IEPs, or health plans, and so I know those things have also been addressed, too. Our school administrators have visited other school systems to look at how yonder pouches and other schools have handled this situation, and, and that's to be commended, because I know our school administrators are committed to having this work where the boots are on the ground and where the rubber's meeting the road. So I, I think that's been good, too. And of course, we're trying to improve teaching, improve learning, you know, decrease mental health issues, and improve our school culture and climate. And, and the feedback I've received from constituents have, have been from some parents, teachers, a grandparent, retired teachers, and all of them have been in favor of this policy and have been very appreciative of the fact that we're going to put it into place. So I just wanted to say I support it, too, and thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Smith?
So I'm, I'm in agreement with my colleagues in what they've said, and I just want to add one thing. I've had a few teachers who have spoken to me, and, and we heard this phrase, and then it's coming from them as well. This has taken a power struggle away from teachers and students, and that is huge, and that is what we want to do. We want to protect our students, but we also want to empower our teachers, not add more difficulty for them. So I feel like this is answering that concern. So I'm definitely in favor of it.
Anyone else? Ms. Baker?
I too am in favor of the policy that we are about to vote on, mostly because, as a retired educator, I could not understand how any teacher could be in front of a classroom with 25 or maybe 30 students, and each one possibly on a phone at a different time during my lesson. The lesson that they need, the lesson that they will eventually be rated on and accredited for our school, that this was not done in a, just a willy-nilly idea. This ban of cellphones is in other, complete other countries in our world. And Dr. Coons, who is the superintendent of public, public instruction, is quoted as saying, "We are so thankful for the input from families, educators, and students on such a critical challenge for our young people. The final guidance shaped by extensive feedback from nearly 6,000 public comments, as well as input from over 1,160 Virginians during 21 stakeholder meetings and public conversations. The public's input reinforces the need for the policy, with many noting that cellphones often distract and disrupt learning." And I was really appalled mostly when I heard from friends who are teachers that children, not your children, of course, but somebody's children, are so disrespectful and would, would speak so harshly to teachers, telling them they can't do this, and they can't do that, and curse at them. Our teachers do not come to school for that, and this is one way to help our teachers teach their classes and children to respect the people that are standing in front of them. So I totally support this policy. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I wanted to just say that before all of this started rolling forward, that I was very much in support of a cellphone ban in the schools. Trying to figure out how to make that work has been very interesting, and I really am thankful to Dr. Halk and staff and, and Dr. Bradts, who have put so much thought into it and found a vehicle that we think will work for us. I'm just asking that parents, you know, trust us and let us, let us, you know, make this a better environment for your kids. When I'm looking at the things on the agenda tonight, where we're looking at schools that are having issues in science and math and accreditation and things like that, that we really need to have as much focused on as possible, this takes so much time off of that, and allows us to have more instructional time. It takes the power struggle away from the teachers, and it allows us to actually start communicating face-to-face with each other. I'm probably the only board member here who doesn't get on Facebook. I don't have a Facebook page, I despise Facebook, but that doesn't mean that you can't enjoy it. But I really think that the whole social media aspect during school hours just adds to the tumultuousness of the day, and it encourages the things that we're trying to address, and we will have a kinder and better school without cellphones, and I just appreciate that very much and in full support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a couple of comments on the issue. I went to the input session in Fredericksburg that Dr. Coons had from the Department of Education, and I only went to listen, because I wanted to listen to the parents, I wanted to listen, there was a student there. I want to, to know outside of Culpeper what people's thoughts were. And she started with giving us data that about made me fall out my chair, 100 and some percent. A hundred and some percent increase in student harm, males and females. So much increase in anxiety, so much increase in all these areas that we all worry about with our children. We don't know if this is the big answer to anything, but it certainly is a help on it. The thing that took me to totally understanding is, one of the ladies that spoke said that her child had been bullied, bullied by the cell phones and getting things during the day, and that they had worked with the administrator, they had a plan, they had called in all the kids, they had done everything. She said, "I have no complaint about what the school system did. They did everything they could, but those children decided to use someone else's phone or go here or do that, and they just kept on. And my daughter went into a bathroom and killed herself during class." That is one that the children don't hear the feeling that you get as a parent when someone says something like that. And if that helps the mental health of our children, it helps with making instruction sacred again. Some of you that, not as old as me by any means, but you were in school, and you remember laughing in class and having fun in class, and you remember also learning in class. But the phone has taken that over, because the laughing and stuff that's going on are the children on, "Look what I got, look what I saw, look at this, look at that." You know, they're going to have a fight down at such-and-such corner. Let's go down there and film it. I want as many hits as I can get, because I can be an influencer. The weird stuff that comes with this perhaps will swell away a little bit from our community. It will be a change. Change is hard. In it, there are the mental health, like if you already have a mental health plan with the school, they are already taking care of making sure that you contact this one or that one. People don't get to see that in some classes, there's a kid that if he takes his pencil, say this is a pencil, and moves it to here, the teacher knows, "I got to send him to the guidance department, because he's giving me the clue that he's getting ready to lose it." Those things go on every day, and they will continue to go on, and we will take care of the problems that come up, because we've always taken care of your children. Everybody on this board only cares about taking care of your children, and we think this is a good idea, and I certainly do, too. So I appreciate you listening to all of us. With that, we will have a vote. All those in favor of the revised use of cell phones as the, and personal electronic device policy changes from our meeting in September twenty-third, twenty-four, please vote by, well, let's do a roll call. This one's kind of important. We'll do a roll call. You call the roll, and we tell you what we think. You do it alphabetically.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchins?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Slay?
Yes.
All right, seven oh. All right, the next motion that needs to be made, if there's such a desire, is the response to executive order thirty-three, authorizing the superintendent proceed with the purchase of the Yonder Pouch program for the high school and the middle schools.
I move that we authorize the superintendent to move forward with purchasing the pouch.
Second? Second? Somebody say second?
Deborah.
Deborah, okay. And now we will have a discussion. Is there any further need for discussion on any of this? All right, we will have a vote. We can do this one by voice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? All right, now we have response to executive order thirty-three, authorize the superintendent to seek funding for the Yonder Pouch program. Is there a motion for this?
So moved.
So moved, Ms. Baker, second?
Second.
Second, Betsy, Mrs. Smith? Sorry. Discussion? Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, we will do by voice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and we have now the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five gifted advisory council members. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to accept this?
I move that we accept the proposed members for the gifted advisory council as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Burnett, is there any discussion? Hearing none, it'll be a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, now we're up to superintendent staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I had on here a status report, elementary school number seven. Well, I don't have news on elementary school number seven, but I do want to be on this platform to say, yes, we're working diligently on elementary school number seven. And we had a recent meeting of our parent roundtable, and it wasn't widely known that that is in the works. So that, and to include, but not limited to, our renovation to CMS. I think there was probably some, we've heard about that, but is this really happening? It's really happening. This board has approved and authorized an architect and engineering firm, RRMM, the firm that did C-Tech for us, that we have had good experience with in the past. We have met with them now on two occasions. We are now waiting to hear from the county about the specific site that we're very, very close on. I had this as a placeholder more as to an announcement of acquiring the site, but I do not have that information. But perhaps by the next time we meet in this format, which would be a month away, we'll have that information, if not sooner. So that's all I have, but just to remind folks, we are diligently working on elementary school number seven for Culpeper County Public Schools to take the pressure off the enrollment levels of our six current elementary schools. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Hearing none, we will ask the instructional report from Mr. Hallman.
Got it. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Bradz, thank you for the opportunity to share some instructional information with you. You good, Johnny? Okay, thank you. As you can see, tonight, we're going to look at accreditation information, but also a little bit of the work that goes behind the scenes to get into school improvement following the accreditation information coming out. So this evening, we're going to look at that, and we're going to look at the Virginia Support Framework, which is for continuous improvement. So we'll start with the good news right out of the gate. Let's start with it. That's a good look. Everyone's accredited. You notice that two are accredited with conditions. That just means that they have more than one category where they have what I call a red. It's a level three. And I'll get into the details of that as we go through. So with these first few slides, I'm just going to give you some reminders and refreshers of what certain things mean. There's lots of slides, but they go pretty quickly. You've heard me say multiple times in front of you, we need kids in school. That's where they learn the information the best, is with us. It's been a challenge, but you can see over the past couple of years, we've gone from thirty-three percent down to nineteen. That's a significant improvement. We still need to make gains there. We'd like to be somewhere between five and ten percent. That was kind of historically where we were prior to COVID. Questions on that? The Office of School Quality for DOE has a pathway or a roadmap to improvement process. We follow their directives and participate in their training and webinars. So you see, we see this graphic every month, but they send it out, and they will, you know, this is kind of the path that we follow. They design the standards, they approve the standards, they design the assessments. Accountability does the math on the assessments, and then they share with us, here are some ways that you could improve if you follow the pathway. A new graphic has come up for how they share their tools with us. So this is the support framework. This comes on all of our graphics, and they want us to continuously work, you notice the circle, on academic supports, staffing supports, organizational learning supports, and school climate support. So I'm going to get into a little bit of that in a bit after we go through each of our schools. So first, this is, this is page one of the report. There are many, many more pages behind this. I'm just going to show this for you and give you some highlights, things that we need to work on, and things that we're doing well on. I'm going to refer to red, yellow, green. Green being level one, yellow, level two, red, yellow, level three. Kind of your stoplight situation, right? So this is a great-looking graphic. So AGs all green are level one in English, all level one in the reporting groups, and they showed a twenty-seven point increase in math for students with disabilities. That's a significant increase. AG earned an R-ten for chronic absenteeism. I would give you a quiz, but just to remind you, R-ten is when you reduce the failure rate in a specific category by ten percent. So you may not have hit the actual target intended by the state, but you reduced that number by ten percent. So you're getting progressively closer and closer. They reward you for that and say, "Hey, we know you didn't make it, but you did R-ten, so we're going to, we're going to count that as the higher number for you this year." Let's see. Oh, I did want to mention that, so level one, two, and three, in the future, DOE has already approved some new titles, and I wanted to get those on your radar now, because you will start to hear about it in the near future. So they will go to distinguished, on-track, off-track, or needs intensive support. So that's a significant change. So the graphic that I used with leadership this summer at our retreat, you can picture a train that's on the track, right? You can see it, it's sitting there. But then you look at that picture, you can't tell if it's going fast, you can't tell if it's sitting still, you can't tell if it's getting ready to go backwards. So somebody could be on track, but maybe not moving forward very fast. Or they could be on track now, but they start to slide backwards. When you, when you hear off-track, you know exactly what that means. You look at that and you say, "Oh, my gosh, that school is off-track? Is that a disaster?" That's what you might start to think. But that could be a school that's done great things, and is making progress, and is moving in the right direction, but now it's going to be called off-track. So it's going to, we're going to have to be very purposeful with explaining to you, to parents, to TV people, what exactly these new categories are going to mean for us. So I'm getting it on your radar now. Okay, so this is a sample of one of the detailed pages behind. This is the one from last year. I didn't reproduce this slide. So you'll notice that it gives you all of the gap groups. I should go back. Let me show you this one. The all-students category, it says academic achievement English, but then it says academic or achievement gap English. The first one is for all kids all lumped together. The second one is for the different reporting groups, each individual group of students. So it's broken down there, it's broken down by current year, previous year, cumulative year, and you could get a different rating. If your three-year was the better of the numbers, they'll give you the three-year average. If the current year was the better, that one would count. So whichever one's going to be higher. I'm not going to go into every single page, there are multiple pages behind this, but you get the idea. All right, jumping forward. Emerald Hill, again, academic achievement English and academic achievement math, both all green. The one that's yellow, what is it? You look, oh, that's achievement gap for English. That means one of those student groups in that previous chart was the one that was at level two. So that could mean of all those groups, it could be one group, could be two groups were in that level. Here, Emerald Hill's level two for English. Black students showed a fifteen percent increase in English scores, but they will focus on students with disabilities. And they were also level one in math. So you can just follow the, kind of the formula, what's going to happen here. Okay. Farmington, again, remember, they're a smaller school, smaller numbers, but the percentage is kind of larger, so it is kind of tricky with some of how the math is done. They're going to focus on reporting groups for black students, multirace students, and students with disabilities. In this particular case, if your group is too small, they won't even give you the current year percentage, they'll give you a three-year average, and they'll look at that number. In math, Farmington was level three for multirace students with disabilities. All of the other groups were level one, were green. Science was a level two, but did increase from the previous year by twelve percent. So what would I say about that? They're on track, they're going the right direction. Farmington was identified for a targeted support federally identified, I should say, for targeted support with students with disabilities based on their interim measures and their pass rates. The federal pass rates are higher than the state pass rates, so they're harder to hit. The target increases annually. Last year, they were eligible for the SIG grant funding. We had that for three schools. We applied for the grant. We got the funds for all three schools. It was a significant, we were able to purchase materials and professional development for those three schools. Okay, Pearl Sample. This looks really good. All green, level one, except for chronic absenteeism. Level one's in English, including students with disabilities in that particular school. They were also all level ones in math, and level one in science. A few years ago, they were yellow, or maybe even red, I can't remember, two, maybe two years ago in science, and now they're up to level one in science. Big focus on that. Chronic absenteeism is at level two, nineteen point six. The target to be level one is less than or equal to fifteen. So their school improvement plan this year will obviously have some focus on chronic absenteeism. Okay, Sycamore Park, green across the board. While they were level one for all reporting groups, the black English group did regress slightly from the previous year, so that will obviously be one of their goals. Even schools that are all green, every school creates a school improvement plan. For the ones that are all green, we said English and math are going to be your specific targets. They showed a seventeen-point increase, an increase with students with disabilities in math. Again, science is level one, with an increase of almost twenty-two points. They were, their chronic absentee was level one, with a decrease in absentees by about eight percent. So they're chipping away at their target as well. Okay, whoops. So Yow. Yow, all green, level one for English and math. They will specifically focus on black students and students with disabilities, and math, same focus, students with disabilities. They were level two in science, and they were able to R-ten. So that, again, reduction in the failure rate by ten percent, that helps on that chart, that detail chart. Chronic absenteeism was reduced by over six percent. So only one of the ten schools was actually yellow for chronic absenteeism, everybody else was green across the board. All right, CMS. Level two, gap English. They received an R-ten in increases with black students, economically disadvantaged students, and multirace students. The students with disabilities group did show growth, but it wasn't quite enough to earn an R-ten. In math, CMS had an R-ten for multirace students and students with disabilities, and they are a level three in science. So one of the activities that we participated in last year was we had to do a complete academic review. If a school was red for level three, we've done some PDs, we've changed some practices for what was going into this year. We see they're in about the same target, so now they get an intensive needs assessment and more of the new tools that DOE has come out with, so we can target what's going on and get to the root cause. And I'll explain that in a second. They were also target, identified for federal support and improvement for Ls, students with disabilities, and multiracial students, based on the measures of progress. They were also eligible for that funding and did receive it last year for materials. All right, Floyd T. Benz. Almost the same categories for gap English. They saw an achievement in the achievement of black students and economically disadvantaged students. They both R-ten there, and the students with disability scores increased, but just not quite enough for an R-ten. Math, FTB was all level one, except for the students with disabilities group. And again, same in science, will do the, almost the same procedures with CMS and Floyd T. Benz for improvement, and they are eligible for the school improvement funding. So that tells me we'll probably be applying for the grant, and it'll probably be related to science. They're very particular in these, in these grants, and you have to really drill down to the evidence-based materials that you're going to purchase. So you've got to get materials from an approved list. CCHS, all level one, except the gap achievement there in math. Level one, green in English. The school, we're going to have them examine the pass rates with and without Workkeys. Workkeys is a substitute test for Work keys is a substitute test for the English 11 reading and English writing. So it can be a substitute test, and what's happening right now is a lot of kids are falling back to that test and passing, they'll get the graduation requirement. We want to know what the true scores for English would be and what we need to do in the actual SOL area, not just the work keys area for high school. Level-two, yellow for math, they R-10 with black students, multi-race students, and got a level one with that group. Level-two for students with disabilities, and level-three for economically disadvantaged students in math. So obviously, their target there will be math, economically disadvantaged students. And as I've tried to explain to some people, well, what are you, what are they, what are you going to do? Just pull this group aside and just work with them? No, if you implement the right instructional strategies that are good for everybody, all groups rise, it's like water and rising the same boats, right? So all, everyone working together on good strategies is good instruction for everybody. They did R-10 with chronic absenteeism. Eastern View, notice the academic achievement for English and math, all green for all students. Then it's, the gap for math is where you start to see the note, notice the difference. Students with disabilities group tested at a level three, so that'll be their target. This is the first time you've seen these other categories at the bottom, so I'll go into those just a little bit. Okay, so graduation completion index you see as a yellow. The target is 88 for weighted index points. Please look at what Eastern View had. They had an 87.4 with the target being 88. So they're about as close as you can get. So they're, we're not terribly concerned about that one. That is based on points for diplomas, GEDs, certificates of completion, and students still enrolled beyond their cohort year. So each of those is assigned a specific number of points. So in this case, if we'd had maybe one more kid get a GED, or two more kids stay an extra year, we probably would have had enough points to hit that target. All right, and the next one, dropout rate. So imagine if a student enrolls and stops attending because they, their family needs them to go to work. There're going to be a dropout, and that happens all of the time. Imagine if you're a student who moves away, you're 17, you move away to another state, another part, part of our state, but just don't enroll. Guess who gets the dropout rate? The dropout, we do. So counselors, administrators, constantly calling, asking neighbors, aunts, uncles, hey, did they, where'd they go? Where'd they move? We need to find them. Are they enrolled? So we try to track them down the best we can. Can't always track them down, and we end up with a dropout number. The last one, the College Career and Civic Readiness Index, or the CCCRI, they were a level two, and you needed an 85 to be a level one. They were at 83.4. And that's based on a calculation of AP, IB, or dual enrollment, CTE credentials and completers, work-based learning, service learning, and JROTC and a credential. All of that goes into a big formula and is calculated, so we're just a few points away on that one. Am I going too fast? Any questions? Okay. All right. Now that you've seen all the schools, let me dive, this is going to go quick. The school improvement process, you can see it's a cycle, and this is step one, you build your team. So the division, we have to complete a division needs assessment and a division support plan. All of the schools will complete a support plan. Depending on whether you are yellow or red, certain schools will have a more thorough process than others. Some, with our help, will conduct a needs assessment, do the webinars with the Office of School Quality, and complete more of the domain areas. So you kind of get a little bit of a pass. If you're all green, you don't have to do the whole bulk of the work. If you're federally identified or have multiple yellows and reds, you're going to do a little bit more work in the improvement area. So there's the support framework, this is the needs assessment, that's about a 15-page document. What do you do in that 15 pages? You sit down, you gather and analyze data, you look at the problems, you try to figure out what the root cause of the problem is, and then you prioritize and you set your goals when you get to your actual plan. Part of the, step three, is you're going to find an evidence-based intervention. We will help them with this process. Then you have to figure out, are we ready for this? What are the barriers? Can we meet the challenges? Can we do it? Step four, this is where the, most of the work's going to take place. So you've figured out what your targeted areas are, and now you need to write your action steps and your goals, and you put it in here. So this is where it really takes the bulk of the work. These are those domains I showed you earlier, and what falls under each one. So when you get to the academic ones, we're going to be looking for high-yield practices, high-yield materials, those kinds of things, and the action steps. When I show you the, the plan, the goals, you'll see it's, it's a much more intensive process this year. Staffing, obviously, teachers look at teacher recruitment, HR would look at principal recruitment. That's actually something that we have to put in here. If you have, let's say, the English department is eight or nine people, and, and six or seven of those are brand-new or very inexperienced teachers, maybe that's one of the explanations or root causes for why a certain groups of kids didn't do so well. So that's part of examining this. Organizational learnings, but looking at your school day, your schedule, what PDs you're doing, what PDs you might need, that's diving into that. And then finally, school climate is really about chronic absenteeism and what you're doing to address it. And so if you're yellow or red there, you're going to have some significant work to do to come up with what our next plans are. They've tried everything under the sun. It's getting better, but obviously, we need, we have a little bit more work to do. So here's just what one page of the improvement plan looks like. You choose a content area, you look at the barriers, write a SMART goal, and then come up with your action steps. And notice in the middle there, the local education agency describe what we do. So we're involved in their process, so we have to be a part of it and help them along the way. Then the evidence-based progress, notice that has to happen monthly, and analysis of the progress has to happen monthly. So there'll be maybe a data meeting, or maybe a benchmark took place during that month. Someone's going to go in here and report on, how are we doing towards our goal? Talked about this, that staffing, so it's going to involve HR gathering some data. Then you have organizational learning supports, this is PD and scheduling. And then finally, there's your chronic absenteeism goal. So you're going to have strategies and goals for each one of those domains. Then you're going to be at step five, you're going to implement, you're going to track your success, and then evaluate, and then here are your steps. Are we making progress towards these goals? Are there adjustments that we have to make? Do we need to put more resources toward one goal more than another? And is this data that we're looking at correct? And is, is it taking us to where we want, want to go? And then finally, are the steps, are we, are we doing exactly what we said we were going to do in the plan? Maybe we said we're, we're going to monitor something four times a month, and when you go back to look at it, and you only, you only got it done twice. That's not with fidelity. So this requires us every month to look at every step. Are you looking at the right artifacts, and do you have the right people at the table? So that was quick. I'll show you the last part. You're, you're just going to monitor up and down. You're going to have the review of everything every month, you're going to see if you need to make any adjustments or changes. That's where I am. Questions? I know that's a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
There was one abbreviation in there I wasn't familiar with, SIG funding, what is that?
Yeah, school improvement grant. That's for the schools that are federally identified, and you don't even want to know what the formula is for how you become federally. I'll sit down one afternoon with you and explain it, but it's, it's tricky. For example, last year, we did have three schools identified for very specific categories of students, that list of students. So if you were federally identified for students with disabilities, let's say, they let you apply for this to get materials and/or PD specifically for that group, we chose to do it, get materials that would help the entire class because our kids are all mixed together, right? You're going to have special ed students and regulated students together. Last year, between those three schools, I think we got about $91,000. So even though this is kind of a lot of work for us to do, it helps us, you know, takes the, the weight off the local budget to be able to do this and use their funds.
Are there grants also from the state that address these specific things that aren't in our normal stuff?
Even though they're federally targeted, the money comes from the state, through the state.
Okay.
Other questions, anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harmon, are the funds guaranteed, or do you have to apply? Which would imply that you might not get them and that the pot might run out.
Applying for the grant's optional, writing the, a separate federal plan is required. So if you're going to write the plan, you might as well go ahead and ask for the money too. So we do. It's not guaranteed.
Because I noticed under the Virginia support framework on your slide, it has academic support, organizational learning, school climate, and staffing, but it doesn't have funding.
Right.
It's not part of...
That, that piece of, is, of that process is actually a look back to say, what did we miss last year? Why are we in this situation? Why were we red in science? And you really drill down in each one of those categories, which is a little separate from the federal process, to just say, you did this, now what's your plan? And it might be that we say, we're going to buy these highly effective, evidence-based materials for science classes. Maybe they weren't getting enough lab time. Maybe, maybe because it's a three-year cumulative test, we need to build in more review than we're already doing with sixth and seventh grade. May, maybe it shows, the data shows, that's where the greatest need is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say thank you. I know this is a huge volume to keep track of.
It is.
And I, I'm very appreciative of the work that you do with the staff, and then with the teachers, and PD, and everything, and I just want to say thank you for this report. It's very good.
Thank you. But between Mark Callahan diving into the data and administrators, soon as the results come back, within a couple of days, our administrators pretty much figure out where they're going to stand, and they start thinking June and July about this whole process. We just have to wait for the state to say, it's official. Now, go ahead.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say thank you for the information. It helps us, it also helps the public understand that teaching is a whole lot, it used to be, you had a faculty meeting and a department meeting, and those were the two encumbrances on your time outside of school. As you can see from these reports, that is definitely not it. And if you think you can go into education and not have a strong math background, I think you've already presented that too. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Finance report by Mr. Dean, please.
Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Brad's. Tonight's update, we're going to start like we did last time with our membership, and specifically look at our average daily membership. We're definitely on a positive trend from last month. I don't know if you recall, we're 57 members up from last month, so our average jumped to 8,224 against a budget of 8,340. What that means, we're still projecting a shortfall here of $908,000, but I just want to remind you, we're two months in, so it's kind of early. There's no need to hit the panic button, but for sure, you know, there is a shortfall. But the, also, the other good news, you can see the enrollment that I put at the bottom there is up to 8,292, so for sure, that'll have a positive effect on the average daily calculation as well. So again, just making you aware how we're tracking towards our budget, so. Next is our expenditures, how we're tracking year-to-date to our budget. In our school operating fund, we've spent $23 million, which is 19% of our budget, of $119 million. So what, what I would tell you, that's normal, and we'll see that in the next slides. Food service, again, we spent 16% of our $4.7 million budget, which is $738,000. Again, I'll tell you, that's normal, so no, no alarms here. We're trending slightly below prior year, so. So what this pie presents is our expenditures by month. So the two bookends of the year, July and June, are the oddballs, and then throughout the year, 8% to 9% is typical. So that's all this is showing on our school operating fund. So we have $96 million left to spend, which is still a lot, but we have a lot of months left. And what I wanted to illustrate here is really how, how predictable our expenditures are and how it's trending to the prior year. You can see, year-to-date is 19.4 this year percent, and last year's 19.6, and we're pretty much dead even, like I was saying earlier. So again, it, it just gives you another, another illustration of how we're trending. With our food service, again, September is, we started with a big, another big month here, 11% use of our budget. A lot of it is our supplies, that we buy our food and, and materials. Again, it's, it's early, it's too early. Just want to get this on your radar, this is our first year of full free breakfast and lunch, so we really want to track these expenditures and see how we're trending throughout the year. So nothing, nothing to alarm you with, there's a long way to go in the school year, and this is very typical. We spent 16% this year, and it was 17% last year, so we're right on track, so. Short and sweet. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. All right, Dr. O'Brien, operations report, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Brad, I'm happy to give you the October operations report, starting with our facilities and maintenance. As you might know, we did finish the stadium and tennis court lights at CCHS, which is the Musco LED lighting, and you can see what that looks like, as well as we finished the tennis courts, completed the punch list. Even though that picture right there shows it's still in progress, but it is done, it looks fantastic, and I think the courts really are, are going to be useful. You also see the number of work orders we completed for September as well. We did have an incident where a fan broke free and actually damaged one of the coils in one of our RTUs at Sycamore Park. That required us to do some extensive repair to it. You can see how that fan bracket was hanging down, which did produce a period of time. Luckily, it was cool that we didn't have readily available air conditioning to the first hall at Sycamore Park, but they've since repaired and replaced that. We also had a breaker burnout at AG Richardson. You could kind of see to the right what it looks like, and after, we replaced it and put it back into place. And then, as you might recall, the flood day we had a few weeks ago, and seeing the maintenance workers out trying to make sure they cleared that bridge off the pathway that connects the meadows over to CCHS and CMS. So we did a lot of great work there, getting that all cleared up and ready to go. I saw this last week, which was a great thing to witness, the JROTC put in place something called a raider course, which really is just some telephone poles that they erected, as well as a couple of walls. And the whole idea is it's part of a course that they run and they compete in. There was a presentation that was done along with Dominion Energy, who assisted them in putting those into place, and I think it was Cadet Captain Hernandez gave a great speech and talked about how they, as the ROTC students, cadets themselves, are the ones who pursued this and developed it from the ground up, and Major Phillips just kind of assisted it along. But as I understand it, they're supposed to have a competition there this weekend, which is part of the state competition, and now they actually can host these things and do them over there at Eastern View. So it's a big deal for them to have this raider course in place. This is the food service meal count, you just heard Neil talk a little bit about the important... You just heard Neil talk a little bit about the importance of making sure we're, we're getting our lunches and breakfasts, and that they're consuming them, because CEP is about reimbursable meals. And you can see that we're up on everything, with the exception of all-a-cart. Kind of understood that. Once again, we've seen this trend this year, that, you know, once you're getting free meals, it's less likely for kids to buy something extra. Not to say that they don't, but not quite as frequently. This is the crunch heard around the Commonwealth. They did get some apples, as they always do, from Carter's Mountain Orchard that we certainly appreciate. And you might notice these slides look a little nicer than typical. Julie Johnston assisted me from food service to add these in and make them a little nicer than what I typically do, so. And I appreciate it as well. It's a, it's a good, it's a nice image versus my typical stuff. Here's our technology. You get a sense of the number of tasks or work orders that we've completed. One thing that we're doing is we're implementing a new tool called Gaggle that provides us a little more keyword surveillance of systems that we manage. In other words, if a certain keyword is sent in an email, or a chat, or something of that nature, we can find it more actively than the system we have right now. We also completed our E-Rate applications, which is going to allow us to receive reimbursements on 80% of some new equipment that we're getting. Again, to help with network security, as well as replace a lot of aged laptops and Chromebooks that we have coming along. For transportation, I'm just going to do a quick shout-out to our Director of Communication, Ms. Hoover, who's been doing something called Transportation Tuesday. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to watch it, but one of the big parts there, I grabbed a snapshot of, do you know when to stop for a school bus, a stop-school bus? Because we know that's one of the things we're still contending with, and the stop-arm cameras are helping us to, to identify those who illegally pass our buses. But we also want, part of that is teaching and training and showing folks that, you know what, this is when you can pass, this is when you can't. So these videos help out a whole lot, along with some of the bus safety videos. We did support the STEM event at the airport, where we brought the fifth graders over from all the elementary schools over two days. And we also supported the Air Fest transportation this last Saturday, where we had somewhere like 2,200 folks that we transferred from Eastern View High School and CCHS to the airport and back again. So it was a pretty good day. I think we had a really good turnout. In terms of ride routing, the routing hasn't changed a whole lot. We're still about 75% of our students ride in the morning, and a little bit higher in the afternoon. I don't know if some sports are finishing up or not, but we do have a little bit of higher of number of kids that we've put on that routing for the afternoon, for a total of 12,000 routed students combined. We do have the most Stop Finder subscribers than we've ever had. We're at 1343. And if you recall, when we first rolled this out last year, I can quote Mrs. Chairman Brown when she said, hey, there's only 600 people doing this, you know? And now we're up to 1343. So it's good to see that we're making gains on that. We did finish our Fuel Master System upgrade, and we're looking at the installation of two new pumps, oh, I'm sorry, of new pumps down at the bus yard, as well as we're taking delivery soon of two new Thomas buses. And those are diesels, and we expect to get them October 28th. And that's all I have. Tried to go quick.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I love the Transportation Tuesday. Can you tell how many hits we get, or how many views?
That's a great question for Ms. Hoover.
You can tell? You don't have to tell me how many, but you're able to track it? That's awesome. That's awesome.
Yeah, we do have that, and we, and we encourage folks. I think it's, it's a great tool. It's a great way to get that message out there.
Yeah. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I have spoken this weekend with someone who has used the tennis courts now that they're completed. Very pleased.
Very good to hear.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
All right, any other comments? What else?
Ms. Bennett, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hoover, if I have this correct, Transportation Tuesdays, Website Wednesdays, that there's just a, a great deal of information available on our website. And we also learned that folks didn't know that, that so much information is there to include but not limited to access to board docs, and board meetings, and records, and documents. So we'll be highlighting...
And can track those hits as well, Ms. Smith. Website Wednesday, so. I kind of was voting for Taco Tuesday, but Transportation Tuesday won out. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We are moving towards board comments, but first, Mrs. Baker, you wanted to give us some information on legislative priorities.
Yes, everyone should have received, I think Ms. Moran put it on your, at your places today. There, I don't know how many proposals actually were submitted, but the executive board approved seven proposals that would come before the delegate assembly in November for the VSB A, to see if they would make it into the legislative position handbook. And the seven that you have in front of you, all of them are amended proposals. There are positions that are already existing within the VSB A policy, but you have, they either deleted or added verbiage to each one to make it an amended proposal. And there are seven of them this year. Two of them were from Prince William, four from Fairfax, and one from Arlington. And if you would just read them over between now and the next work session at the end of the month, and then you can let me know if there's anything that you think you totally do not agree with. And I would have to, I think early November is when I would have to let TJ know that that should be pulled from the assembly and voted on separately with your reasoning for pulling it. And you, we won't have to take a vote on it, but you give me your consensus on how you want me to vote in November at the delegate assembly. And I would really appreciate that for the work session. Thank you.
All right. It is time for board comments. I will say prior to that, future meeting dates, CC, School Board Administrative Committee meets tomorrow morning at 8:00 at School Board Office. The Business Work Section is October 28th at School Board Office. Finance Committee is our next regular session in November, on November 11th. And the regular School Board meeting is also on November 11th. And before we do board member comments, I would like to thank the scouting troop group here for being here. And maybe we haven't bored you too much to death, but this is how things function. When you want something, or you want changes in your school, you go through your teachers, your principals, and, and those people. You involve your parents, and then ultimately, you can let us know that, well, I've talked to everybody in the brother, and I can't get an answer. Then we'll help you, too. So thank you for coming, and I hope you did get something out of it. With that, I believe, Ms. Baker, you are the first up for board comments.
Oh, I thought my other thing covered that, but anyway. I would like to thank Mr. Harmon. That is a really impressive report that you all put together. And I certainly hope that the teachers are ready, willing, and able to put this all together with you, because they have to actually put it into action. So thank you to everybody.
All right, Ms. Hutchins.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the board, fellow board members for voting, and our staff for the, the change in the cell phone policy. I think it has, the pandemic has certainly exacerbated the issues. I was opposed to it when they were first put in years and years ago to make them available to students. And it's going to be a, a lifestyle adjustment for a lot of people, not for everybody, but for a lot of people. And we hope that everybody will calmly work through that. I attended the STEM days at the airport, which was always an exciting time of the year. The kids were really engaged and having a great time at the different venues, and I appreciate the cooperation and support of career partners and all of the community members, and our staff members who helped to make that day happen, because it's an exciting time. And I believe that we had a student who actually went through it in fifth grade come back and as a volunteer to help with the day. Also, wanted to thank Mr. Harmon for the instructional information. Our students are doing well, our overall. Our staff is working hard and to address any of the deficits that they see, and we are greatly appreciative of that. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not going to repeat what they've already said, which I agree with, but I really appreciate the impact that our, our school division makes on the community as a whole. So I work at Chrysalis, and in our mail, in our email, we got a, this is something that Culpeper County Public Schools puts out, what to do in Culpeper. Use it with your clients, share it. So it's really cool to see that our school division is impacting other efforts in our community as well. I also appreciate our support of Air Fest with the transportation. And so we're doing a lot of really good things, and I can't say thank you enough to our staff for the improvement, and I think our schools are on the right track and moving forward, and I thank you for that. But I also thank you for the impact in the community as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Troop 550 as well for attending this evening, and for the leaders taking your time to bring the boys out and helping them learn a little bit about how government works, even at this level. So that's very, very great, and we appreciate you all coming this evening. And other than that, I'm very excited about the cell phone policy. I'm looking forward to implementing. I know it's going to be a big change, as Ms. Pearson said, but I think it's going to be a win-win for our students and for our teachers. Thank you.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. I just wanted to give thanks to the directors and the staff for all of your hard work, and it looks like we're on a wonderful start to this new year. And wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. Ortman at AG Richardson. I went to visit the planetarium there, and it was so much fun and so informational, and just, wow. I wish and hope that all the elementary schools would have the opportunity. I don't know if we can share that with all the elementary schools, but that was incredible. I am very much looking forward to and excited about the cell phone policy. Wanted to thank Carter's Mountain again for their apple donation, apples, and Dominion Power for the raider obstacle course. That's incredible that now we have our own to practice on. I tell you, we are doing so many wonderful, wonderful things for our students. It's amazing. And Dr. Harmon, thank you for that instructional report. So informational, but just so positive as well. And just love to see that we're, you know, focused, and we, we know what we need to focus on. We know what we need to do to improve and to help our students and get that help for them. And so appreciate that. Thank you. Let's see. Well, anyhow, thank you, Troop 550, for coming, and I hope you enjoyed it. I hope it was educational and informative, and have a good night. Thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. I, I would like to echo about the AG Richardson STEM night activities. They, they were great. I know they, STEM had normally been in the spring, and they moved it to the fall, which was actually a great segue into STEM at the airport, where all of our fifth graders go to that, as well as some homeschool students and private school students. And I was amazed, the number of adults and teachers and people at the Air Fest that said to me, gee, when my student was in fifth grade, this was their favorite activity, and one of the activities they've remembered throughout their entire high school career. So I, I wanted to give a shout-out to the, to STEM at the airport, and the career partners and our school system for supporting that. The planetarium, to which everyone seems to be alluding, just so everyone knows, it's not a hard facility. It's, it's an inflatable planetarium. I had never seen anything like that. It was really, did you say?
They ordered it off Amazon.
They, I don't know where they ordered it from, but it was, it was amazing. And, and, and it was actually, it reinforces the fourth and fifth grade SOLs, and it was a little difficult to get into, but once you were in there, it was very exciting. And one of our teachers from Eastern View was in there and giving some commentary, as well as Mr. Ortman. Also, Ms. Stewart at Eastern View has, as you know, previously has done Plant the Moon with some moon regolith, and students designing experiments to look at viability of seeds and food production on the moon. And this year, that group of students is working with Plant Mars. So they're now using Mars regolith to look at, at food production on Mars. And I wanted to give a shout-out to Dr. Bradz, and Mrs. Richards-Lutz, and Mr. Summerscales, and Mr. Harmon for hosting at CTEC, our Virginia School Board Association meeting, where there were about 35 representatives from other school systems who came specifically to Culpeper to see our CTEC facilities and our programs, and to learn about the community support that we had for building that, that building. And so I wanted to say thank you for that, and that's all, folks.
All right. Mark your calendars. I have nothing to add. And so I asked Mrs. Hutchins to read us into closed session.
I move that the School Board convene a closed session at 7:24 PM to consider the following personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. The appointment of certified personnel, the appointment of classified personnel, the transfer of classified personnel, the transfer of certified personnel, the separation of certified personnel, the separation of classified personnel, the approval of hourly Title I translators, interpreters, approval of instructional supplements for the 2024-2025 school year, the approval of technology student interns, the approval of long-term substitute for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year, the approval of substitutes for the 2024-2025 school year, approval of 2024-2025 winter coaching supplements for CCHS, the approval of 2024-2025 winter coaching supplements for EVHS, approval of 2024-2025 winter coaching supplements for CMS and Floyde Bens.
Is there a second? Second, Ms. Pearson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's over. Y'all should be happy.